I'll sit, Mr. Chairman.
They'd like to call the Arizona Planning Board. A meeting to order. Start with a roll call.
James Lowey.
Bob Kuhn.
Joder Gabriel.
Rod Morin.
Rich Canom.
Ted Redway Town Clerk.
Ian Tyne, Boyd Secretary.
On the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of meeting on November 14th. Under all business, we have Duval Auto Salvage Conditional Use Renewal. Item three, new business, one steel recycling condition use application. Item two of new business is Gary's Auto Salvage Conditional Use. Item four, zoning ordinance amendments. Item, and that covers zoning ordinance amendments, covers items, one which is zoning ordinance amendment requests, zoning map change, discussion with action, discussion with action, and public comment. This was start with the minutes of the last meeting.
Make the motion as we approve.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? So pass. Next item up is Duval Auto Salvage Conditional Use Permit. Proposed applicant to renew expired permit to continue operation of existing $85,000 square foot automobile salvage area on 3.6 acres site located at Two Irving Road, Tax Map 19 Lot 6, in the R4 District. Duval livestock is the applicant. I believe the only item that we have on this agenda is the findings of facts.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself. That's enough.
Okay. Let's do this again. Anybody have any problems? We'll go through the findings of facts and get started. Conditional use application with Duval Auto Salvage Yard. Whereas on October 10th, 2013, the Arizona Planning Board did receive a conditional use permit application from Duval Lifestyle Incorporated to relicense an existing $85,000 square foot auto salvage yard automobile salvage area on 3.6 acres site located at Two Irving Road, Tax Map 19 Lot 6, in the R4 District. Whereas on October 24th, 2013, the Arizona Planning Board conducted a public site walk of the existing facility. Whereas on November 14th, 2013, the Planning Board conducted a public hearing on said application. Whereupon the Arizona Planning Board reviewed and given the consideration of the applicant's amended application and has arrived at the following findings and conclusions. Findings of fact, one, the landowner and applicant but right pillar interests is Cynthia Duval, trustee for Duval Lifestyle Incorporated. Two, the property is located at Two Irving Road and is identified as, under the assessors' Tax Map 19 Lot 6. Three, a parcel consists of 3.6 acres of grassland commonly containing salvage vehicles of various types and containing within 90 acre parcel. Four, the applicant proposed to continue utilizing the designated area for storage of salvage commercial vehicles and automobiles. Five, the applicant has general plans of the salvage area entitled Automobile Salvage Relicensing Plan N/F Duval, Two Irving Road as prepared by Albert Frig Associates dated April 9th, 2010, or revisions to our June 2010, June 17th. The existing facility is not located over a sand and ground lava fire recharge area as mapped by main geological survey. Seven, neither the designated facility nor any abandoned or salvage vehicle is located within 100 year floodplain as mapped by FEMA nor is the facility located within 300 feet of a church, school, public park, cemetery, recreational area, or neighboring dwelling. Eight, the designated facility has been configured to be situated more than 300 feet from the upland edge of Grimstone Brook, another natural resource water source on the property. Nine, the facility is not visible from any adjacent property on Irving Road, with the exception of presence of Claude Duval located at Map 9 Lot 6A. Claude Duval submitted a letter for the Planning Board dated June 11th, 2010, indicating the 1,104 distance between the house and the salvage facility provides adequate visual buffer to meet the needs. Performance and condition use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arizona Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance within the criteria of section 9.7-8H of your end of use ordinance as follows. 9.7 point 8 point 1. Use is compatible with similar and general categories of use of neighboring properties in that proposed use is not similar with other residential uses in the district, but is consistent with the operation of an industrial mixed-use farm complex. Use is not permitted in the R4 District, but is pre-existing nonconforming use and cannot be expanded beyond the existing boundaries. We need to vote. I need to have a vote on that.
Would you have to move to accept the conformance condition 9.7 H1?
All those in favor?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. 9.7 H2. The use is consistent with comprehensive plan and anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that use is in conflict with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated development of the neighborhood as an agricultural low-density residential zone. The use is legally nonconforming and therefore has standing as an existing use. How do we?
Make the motion to approve 9.7 H2.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. 9.7 H3. There is adequate and safe pedestrian vehicular access to and into the site accommodating an anticipated traffic to and from proposed use in that the site has ready access via good gravel road from Duval Lifestyle Complex and adequate site distance and access to the Irving Road, Irving Grimstone Road. How do we vote?
Move to accept 9.7 H3.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? 9.7 H4. That there is adequate water supply and sewage disposable available to service the use in that water supply is not essential to the operation of the facility. Waste liquids are drained from the incoming vehicles and incinerated on-site. The draining operation is conducted in the bond on previous services. How do we vote?
Moves to accept 9.7 H4.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? That there will be no noise, dust, or vibration of smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties. All vehicle fluids shall be drained from all vehicles before storage within the salvage yard. Waste petroleum fluids will be burned on-site in accordance with the state main permits and waste fluids shall be recycled. How do we? Any of the motion?
Move to accept 9.7 H5.
Second.
All in favor? 9.7 H6. The physical characteristics of the site, including location, smoke, soil, drainage, vegetation cover, are suitable for proposal use, proposed use, in that the physical characteristics of the site are suitable for the use. The underlying and previous soils prevent per location of petroleum fluids into the groundwater and proposed improvements and erosion control measures shall preserve the integrity of existing lands. How do we find it?
Move to accept 9.7 H6.
Have a second? All in favor? So move. That the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. The facility will not present public or private nuisance to the adjoining property owners of the neighborhood. The site will not be visible from the street unless adjoining property owners. One potentially impacted property owner Claude Duval submitted testimony that property line buffering for visual impacts is unnecessary.
Move to accept 9.7 H7.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? So move. 9.7 H8. The proposed use conforms to all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any permanent showland zoning standards. The applicant has designated the facility in compliance with all other performance and standards and technical requirements of the land use ordinance.
Move to accept 9.7 H8.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Therefore, be resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arizona Planning Board hereby approves the application of Duval Lifestyle to continue operation of existing automobile salvage facility contingent on the following conditions. The applicant shall maintain all state of main permits and full force and shall maintain compliance with all state regulations and standards at all times. Two, no salvage parts or vehicles shall be stored outside the designated area shown on the red corner map, nor shall any materials be located closer than 300 feet to any stream, intimate stream, well, or body of water. No salvage material shall be stored within the showland zone located on a property. Three, this conditional use permit shall expire on December 12th, 2016. Failure to renew this conditional use permit prior to its expiration date shall result in a loss of legal nonconforming status in the salvage operation. Make the question.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Any opposed? So move.
Greg Monroe.
Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe. Greg Monroe.
Can we, question for you. Can we start this earlier? So we can, because site walks very hard in the wintertime.
Yeah, we should do it in summer.
Okay?
Marty, it's on my calendar.
Okay. I mean.
Okay, item three on the new business. One steel recycling condition use application, determination of completeness. Proposed application to renew expired permit to continue operation of existing 43,000 square foot salvage recycling facility on 22.9 acres site located at 2244 Polon Road, Tax Map 12 Lot 9, in the VI District. One steel recycling is the owner applicant and Jared Jacob is the applicant's agent.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a situation where one steel recycling, as you know, is a salvage facility out of Route 1, been operating there since.
Oh, great.
I think it was actually since 1999 or at least the last permit I saw, the earliest permit I saw was 2001. So it's been operating for quite some time. However, somewhere in the mix, the applicant forgot to renew the conditional use permit. They were notified by our office in 2010 and that they needed to come in and renew the permit and they didn't take any action. However, they have now. They came and they have met with me, both their attorneys and the applicants, and they are currently in the process of examining the site and it's looking like it's going to a sale and therefore they need to get a permit. Now, this has been expired for quite a period of time, so they really basically have to reapply for the conditional use permit. It is a permitted, or I should say it's conditional use in the VI District and therefore does not face the same nonconforming status issues that many of our other facilities similar to this do have. The applicant has submitted materials in support of their application, completed application, and they also have, it's very interesting, they've submitted the same cycling that was approved by the planning board in 2006. So you've noticed that on your packet, that the plane will look awfully familiar, even down on the signatures of the board members who were in attendance at that time. I think it's just about everybody here.
No.
Not you. Okay, sorry.
And not Jimmy.
Okay, well.
And that.
You were here, Bob.
I know.
My cell phone's not good.
So, in any case, the applicant is here, they are requesting a number of waivers. What we want to do is go through and determine completeness of the application. Basically, the applicant claims that they have not altered the salvage operation really since 2003, in fact, was approved, and it was actually in 2006. They got another approval to do some slight alterations and the planning board members had that application before them. Was it 2003?
2006.
It was 23, I don't know.
December.
Yeah, it was, was it December?
November.
Yeah, it was.
It was November.
It was October. So. And so the applicants are requesting a number of waivers from the usual submission considering it's the existing facility. They include a waiver from total survey, soil survey, zone line designation, it's all in the VI District. Site distances from the entrance, quite frankly, it's been operating for quite some time, it's like 1,000 feet. Specifications for non-existent, for basically non-existent incinerated devices, not applicable. They don't need a waiver for them. They don't incinerate on the site. Detail construction sheets, the applicant is not proposing to make any expansions or changes from the existing operations, so there's no need for detail sheets. Outdoor lighting plan, the applicant has not made any changes or intends to make any changes in the lighting plan from the existing facility. Landscape plan, building plan, the applicant's not proposing doing building changes.
Can we go back to the landscape plan?
Sure can.
You thought you made that for your 25 foot upper.
Well, that's the issue. The issue was that.
And that you kind of went over.
Well, I kind of went over it because I'm just going to deal with these individually. The landscape plan is one of which, you know, essentially that was not conforming in 2006 when it changed. And therefore, since this is a new application, it has to be in conformance with that. Signs and cost estimates, signs in the form of the sign ordinance, so there's no problem there. Cost estimates, they're not really proposing to do anything different unless, depending on how the board rules on the landscape. There is really no other changes and there are no other compliance issues except that. You'll notice also you have a DEP report on stormwater and leachate, and you have received a DEP permit, and you also have received, I believe, the town's DEP permit as well. And SAG has too. So the only people who haven't are us, basically.
So the question?
Any questions?
Yes, Chair.
Go ahead.
If I may, I have a basic question for the planner. If the applicant was notified in 2010 that they needed to submit to the planning board and they did not, yet they have received licenses from the town and from the state and have been operating legally, why are we considering this application?
Well, let's see. As far as the state's concerned, the state has been notified by the town that they were in compliance.
By vote.
By the code enforcement laws.
Right. So, were the state were in compliance, but they have not submitted to us, so obviously they must be in compliance now without submitting to us.
No, they're not in compliance without submitting to us.
They don't have a permit, is what we're saying.
They don't have a permit to do the operation.
I'm confused, Mr. [inaudible].
Can I turn it?
I'm very confused.
Can I turn it, sit down? This is a new application.
Sorry.
Now?
Yeah.
So you consider it as a new application? And what the request is, is that we consider the documents that are on file already for the site plan, the lighting, the driveway, all of those things because they're known we have the documents. Do we have the documents to make a decision from them?
But my question, Bob, is why is this a new application? If they've been operating legally since 2010, why are we considering this as a new application?
They, they, that's with the state, not with the town.
No.
No.
It's the state and town.
From the town, not for the waste facility. It was 2003 was the last time that.
When we say the town, you mean the Board of Selectmen issued a permit for operating the facility. The Board of Selectmen did not check with our office.
But every time, okay, 2003, okay, you got two, every three years, which everybody else is subject to, okay, three, six, nine, 12. And they missed, and now they get to submit a new application.
Right, so that's why they have to come back and submit.
Let me get this straight. The Board of Selectmen can issue a permit even though the permit is technically a violation of town orders?
Yeah, they, yeah.
So why are we here?
They were in mistake.
All they have to do is get a select.
They were there to do so. If you, if you want me to say it on camera, you have to. Yeah, permission not an issue.
But it was, and it can be.
No, it legally cannot be. It was an illegal action to do that.
How many times?
It was a bad action.
Well. Okay.
It was an action that, that, it was a, it was an error that was made.
It was an error by the Board of Selectmen. So we have to address the Board of Selectmen not to make those errors in the future.
Exactly.
Okay.
The other question I have for you. If this is a new application, I'm looking at the, the application fees and we're not checking it off as a new application.
It is a new application. They paid $500 and $500 fee and the $500 peer review fee.
Okay.
So they have, unlike the other ones, they have paid full amount for the application.
The only other, the only other issue is that they can't discuss them with you for surety.
We have not discussed that.
Other question, also at the same time. Over the years of modification of their planters or whatever elsenot, has there been any permits to the code enforcement officer for redoing things? Because the last time through there, they have put in new cement pads and everything else at one time or another. Also, two at the same time, have they kept up with the submitting to the town, which I recall from this, of water testing or whatever elsenot?
They have been doing that through DEP, yes, and those reports to us. They have that reported, I can't speak to previous actions.
I mean, in past years.
I can't speak to 2006 and 2010.
The reason I'm asking this is because we've made other people in town jump through the hoops and what's fair is fair.
But it sounds as if you're saying that you have current water standards from the DEP.
That's.
They've been submitted.
Current.
But how long have they current?
That was done just, what, this year, last year?
We've been submitting since 2000.
To the town, to the DEP.
But have they been done in the past as they were supposed to? 2004, 2005, 2006, I mean.
It's, I can't speak since then. 2000, we have our license or DEP been submitted formally.
Okay.
I think part of the problem here is we have ownership changes. We're not.
How many times?
I would address that to the owners. The current owners.
And smorgasbord steel.
So at least three times?
Well.
And so new permits should have been, a new application should have been followed through?
No.
No?
The permit goes with the land, not with the owner.
But you bring up one really good point, Marty, and I guess with the chair's permission, there was mention of putting in additional slabs and making changes and yet you've submitted an original site plan. Does that site plan show all of the changes and modifications that have been made?
That's correct. The facility's not.
I'm sorry?
This facility's not in.
So there are no new slabs and stuff?
No, no new slabs out there. We've got the current building out front. The state.
Is that done?
Nope. Just going to do with you guys.
Question. I see the impervious areas, I guess it's just shy of the.
Yeah.
So you probably don't have a, they probably don't have a separate stormwater permit outside of the multi-sector general permit.
Not that I have any.
I don't think that's.
And since that is a water quality permit, their permit or their submissions to DEP, I think would trigger that if they ordered that, if they could improve the service, wouldn't they?
Yes, if they were to change something right now that made it, depending on when the original improvements to the site were constructed, it could set them into a different set of criteria.
I think the last one was 2003. You weren't, you weren't dealing with them that time. So one steel, basically, so we've made no improvements to the site since we purchased it in 2000, right?
2000.
2000. Okay.
I'd like to make motion that the Board accept the general submissions in this application and the request for waivers for all, with the exception of the landscape plan and the offering plan being subject to a site walk by the Board if they confirm what is there.
No.
You have a second on that?
I have a second.
For the sake of discussion, I'll second it, but I don't agree with it.
Okay. You second it?
Yeah, because I mean, we need to discuss it.
Yeah, okay, so, just a few seconds, you got a discussion on your mind.
The problem I have is that he's looking for a waiver from the fire department, who hasn't been out there in 10 years. I have a, I have a hard time with that. He's looking for a waiver from, from the town, or the roads. I can't give his name.
Public.
Public, yeah. I, I think these guys need to go, he needs to get letters from them stating that it's acceptable. It is.
Important word, Mr. Chairman. The only thing is that, that the town, the town, above Board structure has no real authority out there because this is a state island.
Well, I would like to.
The fire chief certainly has.
I would like to add to Richard's comment. I'm looking at the list of proposed waivers and many of them say not applicable, no changes. But if this is a new application, no changes is not applicable. So you can't say no changes if it's a new application. You need to have that information. And we need to have it as current information. We can't say no changes. Because there's nothing to change from.
Well, the documentation that you submitted from the original submission that had gone out is on file.
The original submission is no longer valid.
But that's what they submitted with this one, was the site plan, the buildings next, the road, the site distance, the operation.
Then it should be submitted as a submission and not requested as a waiver saying no changes. You know, outdoor lighting plan, I'm looking at all of these things that say no changes. You know, building plans, structures, all of that should be submitted because it's a new application. That's my understanding. This has lapsed and it's now a new application.
Yeah, I agree with, with John. Should be considered as a new application. What I point out to the Board, if I may, that when we've gone to applications on other sites where we have existing conditions, for instance, where we have paved minimum soils and there's going to be no changes proposed, we have given waivers in the past for medium intensity soils or high intensity soils, considering there's no soils that are being stripped, but proposed to application. And that there's going to be no changes to the existing facilities in terms of existing lighting on the site. A good example would be like Bentley's, we didn't ask Bentley for a lighting plan of the entire site, just the changes he was. A good example would be like Bentley's, we didn't ask Bentley for a lighting plan of the entire site, just the changes he was proposing for his lighting, his new light, not the existing one.
But that was not a new application.
Oh, yeah.
That was an ongoing amendment to an existing operation. This is not, this, this has lapsed, that's what you told me. This has expired.
The permit has lapsed, but the use is not, the facility and use is not, but the permit has lapsed, yes.
That's correct, so you need to consider it as a new application and in that case, new data has to be submitted from scratch. That's my understanding.
Well, I would respectfully, again, and I appreciate your opinion, but I, I don't know, I don't agree. There would be nothing for this board to gain from them taking the lighting plan that was submitted, copying it and putting it in this. Taking the building plan that's already on file, copying it and putting it in this. Taking all of the data that was submitted previously and putting it in this. The review by the plant, by the planning office and by us would be right back to where we are. I mean, that's how I feel.
Yeah, but it should be dated, because we have a current date for it.
That the plan that-
And I agree with the-
The plan that we have here, it says the date is 2003. This is not a current plan. So we don't know if this is an as-built, current condition plan.
Well, that's what I said, subject to a site lock, isn't it?
And, and I, I can agree with what, I, I understand what you're saying and I agree with you, but unfortunately I also agree with John. How can we say, how can we take a 2003 application and use it as justification for 2013 permit?
Well, I think the business is been new, I think it's known to the-
But, but we're looking at issuing a new permit and that's where the issue would become, and, and I, a lot of it is semantics.
And I think, I think some things, you know, we could, a lighting plan, for instance, if, if they had prepared a lighting plan, I'm not sure if they did or not. But if they did and the lighting hasn't changed, I'm willing to accept, you know, either that lighting plan or instead of really in the, in the application saying, you know, no changes to the lighting, you know, referring to a plan that was generated and dated in 2003. And of course, all that is subject to verification by us in the tent.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, a, a point of, a point to consider is we just approved the plan, uh, reissue of a permit from an applicant who submitted as testimony a plan that was drawn in 2010. This board went out into, onto, into the field to verify the conditions were the same.
Current.
Current, as they were reflected in that 2010 plan. And so therefore, the applicant, uh, this board has been precedent to accept a plan that is dated, not the current date or the former date and say that this is valid information because there have been no changes since the time of this plan.
If we didn't have a signature block here identifying this as 2003 and this was presented to us as the site plan, we would be accepting it?
Well, we'd, we'd-
Would a current date-
The planner and CEO, we do a site lock and, and look and see. But, but here's the other question to ask you also. Fact is, the application that we just were referring to in 2010, they had to make a, a new site plan to be acceptable for, at the time in 2010. Okay, this is not a new site.
But it's no different than the 2000 site plan.
But if, if the conditions aren't the same, current, you know, or, 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 you know, show the current conditions, then personally I'd find accepting that plan, even though it, it is 10 years old and that's definitely not the practice we want to encourage all the time.
Okay, we have not, give you an example, another salvage yard, okay? Three years ago, he had a current plan, he had to come back with a new plan, even though his plan was current. He had to come back with a new plan.
And the board requires that?
Yes. Now we're gonna turn around and say no?
We're gonna be looking at that plan as the next application from, from the 2010 plan that is, is not submitted in 2010.
But this is 2003.
Is it the length of time that's the concern or the fact that it's an, it's not-
My question, my question is, the applicant is representing this as current conditions, how do we know? Are we gonna go out there and, and actually survey, are we gonna check every last little thing on the, on the site walk if that our job? Or is it the applicant's job to demonstrate current conditions done by a surveyor or architect or, you know, whoever will state the plan?
And he's giving me a testimony, verbal, and that document that there's no change. The verbal testimony has equal weight with that paper. And it's our job to go out and see what changes, if any, if there are.
I mean, in my opinion, we go out there, we see if, if-
Any changes, then it's a whole new bargain.
If the plan looks different, then we go to them and say, hey, we need an updated plan, everything looks consistent.
And if this one's wrong, everything else might be wrong.
Then, then I would probably be inclined to, to say I would, you know, accept the plan.
So you're gonna go out there and locate all of these points on the site walk?
With the building, the building is already there.
Building, the slabs, the areas.
Yeah, we know what the seven H are, it's a lot better than looking at stakes, John, we're talking solid structures out there today. And, uh, like, whoa, we know where his buildings are, where the wood is, where the vehicles are, you can go out and see, they're a pretty nice walk-through. Got, got some nice people, that, I mean, that's where each of these are, they know where.
Say, hey, uh, yeah, I'm John from L and I'm working with, uh, the attorney for one steel. I just wanna make a quick comment, we did bring a landscaping and a buffering plan in case the board didn't grant that later. And that shows the current conditions on the property that's dated today, so we-
Was that based on a new survey or based on a, a plan?
It's based on a new. Based on certain human out there.
Yeah, let's see.
So then that should have been submitted as the application?
Yeah, we, we just be trying to pull this together. I mean, the value respect there, an area on the site, looks to be a scanned image.
What's that, Jamie?
Looks to be a scanned image over here, I-
Get some detail from the plan.
Right, but it, it looks to me that, uh, one hand.
Hmm? It does have some difference. Yeah, there are some differences. Can you pull this up, can you?
The features shown, other than property lines, information was digitized by aerial survey, using aerial photos they took of the site.
So that doesn't do us any good.
Record this, this last one.
I mean, from a landscaping plan, probably all, well, we, we got information, that that's absolutely a purpose of the, of the landscaping plan, other than for whatever other information is-
I mean, that only shows a very small portion of the site and I don't think, I mean, despite my comments on this potentially being sufficient, that in no way would be the my, my-
Right, yeah, we wouldn't think it would be sufficient for a site plan, for a landscaping plan, it just, you know, whatever information, additional information it provides. In addition to the time that's already on file, it's, it's, it's not gonna change this.
The rest is up to the landscape to decide. Well, let's, let's give the deliberative motion that we have, but that's going to be the first meeting.
So was the motion on the table to, to deem the application complete?
No.
Okay.
No.
It was only, it was, the motion was intended that they not have to redo all of the general submission requirements. That would be the same, if there is no change. If the building's located where it is, if the lighting hasn't changed, those are things that usually staff does before they submit, so what would assume? If there's no, if there's no change, I have no reason to believe that there's some major change. We can look at it pretty quick and see if suddenly there's all of these outside lights and that kind of stuff, I wouldn't go into the detail. But it's just that they didn't have to recent that documents that they had submitted originally. The regulations and the ordinance has changed since 2003. New requirements, landscaping, the buffering, I even think the fire is, may even be new and I didn't touch it when I reviewed it. And I'd be happy to have that added. But that's all, just that they not have to submit those, that we considered the documents available to us and on record sufficient from which to make a decision, that's all. So you'd have those documents, these other submissions, the results of the site walk and the results of, of planner's review to make your final decision. This is, that doesn't do with final decision.
Well, I, I still have to disagree with you, Bob, I, I feel that we need a current site plan that at, at least has a current standard, may not have been changes, but I feel someone should have been out there verifying that plan and testifying to that, you know, professional surveyor. And I also feel, well, I guess we haven't gotten to the waivers, but I don't think we should be granting waivers on this particular application. We have an applicant that was notified in 2010 that has not renewed their application and we've gotten a screw-up by enforcement and enforcement hasn't been properly in place. And we have a screw-up by the selectmen that they didn't check the enforcement, so everyone's at fault, but I think we need to start from scratch.
Ted, you have any personal comments? Well, we can schedule a site walk and I can go out there prior to that site walk, as you wish. I will probably not be able to get out there in the snow, but, um, sorry, they go out soon, but.
Ted, wanna bring on the motion to, to, to a vote anyway and get it either on the big or off the top or the rip?
Well, I'm angry. Um, read the motion, Ed.
Bob, who moved to accept the current application and their request for waivers other than the landscaping plans subject to a site lock? We're just gonna accept the motion for discussion.
Okay, if the motion doesn't pass, would we consider going through every one of these waivers individually?
You have the chair.
That's what I was gonna ask the question, do we really need to go through the, the waivers and provide these guys with information on what we're willing to accept and what they need to bolster in that plan in order for us to deem it complete?
That's for after this.
What's that, John?
Right.
That's for after this.
Yeah.
That's acceptable, okay.
Right.
And to grant a waiver without actually being on-site to see what we have.
No, no, he, this motion was conditional on the site walk.
Subject to.
Subject to site name. Okay, um, we all agree that, and all are favor of that motion? All opposed? Motion fails. Um, I'd like to propose that we go through these waivers as indicated in the initial application, uh, if you determine which one we wanna consider.
Mr. Chair, with all, you know, so do we look at just the waivers or all of the appointments since there's been a question of the adequacy of items that were submitted that certain members of the board think may, may not be current or, or up to snuff with, for a new application? You know, when I read down through this, you see the check mark says under the request to be waived, but really there's been some discussion on items such as the site line that they had a check mark that was submitted.
You're saying go on the whole site plan requirement?
I mean, if there's questions on what these guys need to apply in order for us to deem the application complete, I think it's worthwhile.
I think that involves a discussion that John brought up as to whether or not we think this site plan is even appropriate.
Well, right, but that's, but that's part of, but that's one of the items that is listed as a requirement to be submitted that we as a board need to assess and make determination.
Okay, I, I misunderstood.
Sorry.
Comment on that? Okay, well, we have, we've just received a new landscape plan, but it also would be a site plan too.
I disagree with that.
Yeah.
I mean, because it's not anywhere near an accurate depiction of the entire site.
Yeah, I don't consider this a site plan.
I'd be much more inclined to accept the one here that was already submitted than, than the landscaping one.
Because the plan is 2006 and it's just been signed 12/11/13. But here, the date of submission is November 21, '06.
I mean, the dates are, and to me aren't as-
I'm just-
Yeah, it's, it's what the client shows.
I, I would say if you look at the landscape plan, you would have a difficult time locating accurately any of those items.
Well, this is the proposed improvements and this show, this, although taken from aerial surveys, this shows existing, existing location of this. This is proposed, this is existing. According to the notes, as we, we tell you that, Jamie.
Oh, you have the other, the, the large plan you were pointing to on your right is the same as that.
I'm sorry, being the same as your, 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 your small picture. Being the 2003 map and then this being, um, there's not a date on the aerial photograph, but there's probably the ones that were flown in 2011.
Yeah.
Like, yes?
But the fact is you have to say probably is a problem.
Well, we can have the applicant give us the, the data on the, uh, source of, of this information.
Well, how about just a real plant, like normal?
So, you mean, a real plant being done by a surveyor?
Human as-built, well, at least validated by a surveyor, it may not have changed from this plan, but somebody needs to validate that and put a stamp on it. I, I don't see the big problem. And then that would also address a, a number of the waivers because then you don't have to say, you know, that-
that there are no changes, because either it's there on the plan or it's not.
So what you're saying is that we should have a currently dated plan?
Currently dated, as built if necessary, or because it does propose changes. So it's a current, a plan that is verified by a registered surveyor.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion that we require.
I'll second it.
Yeah, that, my motion is that we ask the applicant to submit a current plan that is properly...
Reflects the current conditions.
Properly validated by a registered surveyor.
Wait a second. The motion is second. Yeah. Discussion.
Yep. Would a, and a letter or affidavit, so to speak, from a surveyor that testified that the improvements that have been made on site are reflected in this plan be passed?
To me, they would be if, if the surveyor validates that this plan is accurate, even though it's an old plan.
Sure. I'm just, I mean...
Yeah, why not?
Right.
Any comment? Well, I'm just thinking, I'm just looking at the requirements for proposed site plan. It says it's, it can be sealed by a professional engineer, landscape architect, or a surveyor. This is sealed by a landscape architect. Yeah, that, that's, the landscape architect only deals with the landscaping. Well, no, not at all. We've got a site plan here that shows actual conditions here. Yeah, from the survey, what you're saying is...
I am architect and sign your site. Landscape architect was only just come around, or like beforehand, it was landscape architect. Or maybe, this has been on the, this, we've been using this since 2009.
So, but Ted, this, I mean, this plan right here by Sabeo Peckins in no way shows all of the, all of the proposed or existing site conditions.
No, it doesn't show, it doesn't show lighting?
Well, no, but even, I mean, number two here on the site plan of apartments, you know, pretty basic language showing both existing and proposed improvements on the site.
Which one are you referring to? Three? No, no, two, it's proposed site plan. Oh, oh, you're talking here. So I can look at the notes.
Showing the existing conditions.
Yep, showing existing conditions.
Hey, this, this may be, in my opinion, perfectly adequate for us to do the landscaping, but I think we should remove it from conversation on whether a site plan has been submitted that's adequate for our review.
Okay.
Your decision, John.
Any further discussion?
Well, John, here's the motion. It's a...
Do we have a water on the motion? Read the motion again, please.
Okay, John Kindred moved that the applicant will submit a current plan that's properly validated by a registered surveyor. We're just going to second the motion.
Do you want to amend that to a certified letter?
Ken, I think it would be, with all due respect, worth going through these to determine if everything is, is there that is depicted on this plan. Because there may, you know, there might be other things we need them to amend on the plan in order to reach a new application without going through the effort of preparing and resur surveying the whole site.
Well, if we're in favor of John's motion to coincide with item two, proposed site plan, once we accept that, then we can go on saying these are the things that are missing in the existing one.
Well, I agree with John's, John's motion is that it would require them, right after we say yea or nay, to prepare a new site plan. Because of, because, because of the, the questions of the legitimacy of the existing conditions.
So you're saying you want to go through one of these to determine whether or not we need a site plan, new site plan?
That, that's what I would suggest.
Well, those are all subsets of the proposed site plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, okay.
So there's no reason to go through them. We have to get, if they have to prepare a new site plan, they have to meet all of these requirements.
Well, listen, I agree with Jamie. I think we should go through them, because some of them are clearly inappropriate, unnecessary. Because this is an existing condition. I'm not sure I want to get topo, shoot topo on an existing parking lot.
Right. I mean, and exactly, and that's my point, is that there's a, there's a large expense. Not that that needs to bear in, but there's a large effort on these guys' part to go out and resurvey if, or a surveyor could go out there and prepare a letter. However, there may be other things we want to see added on this plan, i.e. setbacks that I don't see that may or may not identify something on the property that, that we want to address during the discussion.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion? Proposed?
No, I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay.
Are you in favor?
I'm in favor of the motion, yes.
Two in favor?
Proposed? You're voting? Well, you're abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
Three in favor, two opposed, one abstaining.
Two opposed, two in favor.
And I would request that we go down through and assess what we think they need to do, and that very well might come back to the same conclusions of requiring a new, new site plan.
Okay, let's start doing that. How do we feel about the property boundary surveys?
I think that's, that's going to show up anyway on, on the deed. They have to have the survey done to buy the property.
Should we just go?
This is sealed, this survey here that is on the site plan is sealed by a landowner. So it's, it's a sealed clearly hat.
I would, I would suggest that we look at the, the items that are requested for waivers.
Just the waivers?
That, okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought Jamie wanted, the wall.
Or, or anything else.
Some of them are unnecessary.
Right, I mean, mine, but is, you know, there's discussion of, of whether this plan right here is adequate to serve as a site plan for, for the new application, right? And we need to go through our items and assess that. Otherwise, we're just going to be talking around in circles all night on, you know, what, and not really providing any clear direction to these guys on what, what they need to get to us so that this project can be pulled.
So your suggestion is that we go through each other?
Yes, that was.
Okay, so on item one, I guess the first item would be proposed site plan drawn at scale, not to exceed one inch.
So we, we had one, but it's all...
One inch to three.
Right.
Right, that one inch. Who's that?
One inch to forty feet.
One inch to forty feet. Would you accept a scale of less than one inch or more than one inch equals forty? One inch equals fifty. This is one inch, the landscape plan, the, the concept plan was that one inch equals a hundred.
The back of that disc, but it's one to forty.
Right, this one's here, it's one to forty.
So this is in the red, four makes one inch equals forty is the minimum.
Yep.
And that's what the scale was depicted on, right?
Yeah, it's one inch to...
Okay. So, so then the question of this is, you know, to my suggestion, is a certification statement from a surveyor adequate, in the board's opinion, to, to have the existing conditions of this plan as, as our site plan going forward?
It would be fine with me if I said before, as long as it's currently dated, right?
And also two at the same time, what zone this is in. Because back when, back then when we were all starting, okay, this was HC1, HC2.
And that gets to my next point of the setbacks. I don't know what the setbacks are, look at it.
So they need to be indicated, right?
Right, so, so we need to have setback lines indicated on the plan. So if you, if you just go by that one item that we require on the plan, that means a new plan is going to be submitted.
Well, or, or they could go out and verify these conditions and add...
Setback.
Actually, I, I might point out that this plan is not a complete plan. It doesn't show the complete parcel. So that, that needs to be updated as well.
Ken, for large parcels like this, is it the board's practice to, to allow a parcel boundary survey, so to speak, where they have, they've got varying distances around that, the portion of the site that is being developed?
It's done occasionally, it's not the norm, but we have done it all the time.
Well, if we look at the landscape plan, we'll see the larger context of this within, within the entire project. And see that the area that's not included is all wall, and, and the actual, the rebar, the rebars have been identified. For instance, we can't find a reusable plastic cap on the plant. Eight inch rebar at the, what I would assume is the northwestern corner of the property. Finds a crotch in a tree, has it indicated there. And it's totally irrelevant to where the, all the improvements are occurring. So we know number one is closed, so it's certainly a violation. So it's exactly the next thing. To read the deed, you can verify whether or not the landscape plan showing the survey is sufficient without having to have a re, re-surveying of the plan.
Let's continue on down through these images. We identify these things and add them all into...
I mean, I'm, I'm content with the boundary, the larger boundary shown on that plan and the, the data of general fear.
Okay, item, the information block, contain location, address, map block. That's on the existing plan.
Where are you then?
What happened to rights of way and top of reference?
I thought that's a change, was to make the reference term. No.
Are there any legal restrictions or something for which you don't have documentation that says you submitted it?
I believe there is a right of way in the upper right-hand corner. Upper north, eastern corner. If I recall, there's a right of way up there. But I may be going...
A legal right of way? This isn't a legal one.
I can't be 100% sure, but I, I thought I remembered that.
Okay, well, if there's a legal right of way, they should show them.
Topo survey, I, I mean, where no proposed improvements are, are, where more improvements are proposed, I'd, I'd be fine.
Now, there was, there was a topo, there was a topo survey submitted back for, probably in '03, when it, because, and we were deeming that at the time, because they also turned, did the wetland survey and everything else, because it was so wet in the back undeveloped sections of this.
So the board generally...
So that should be already on file.
General from the board, the existing documentation that we have for topo is adequate? What's feeling...
I don't know that, that we have. I think the applicant can submit that topo work that was done in the past. I'm sure the applicant has that. That should be part of the application, not that...
By that, apply our own, see to have it.
Yeah, not that we require new topo work, but that topo work should be there. Because there is, you know, there, there is runoff in that site. It is a wet site. There are oils and things, so we need to be concerned with that.
Because there was that also too, where they turned out to have the, uh, check for the oil puddles. They had certain areas to be checked, so they, they didn't have oil going to the ground. You know, I mean, it's saying that it's already there, because that was one of the things that was required to make sure. That's why I was asking about everything being submitted at the proper time.
And I think, do they have test wells that were, I think they have some test wells there. Is that right?
Need new information.
Oil.
In order to get our multi-sector permit, we have to do this quarterly, unsubmitted. On the high quarter, we didn't need to, which is our, why are our...
Yeah. Yeah, so you submit that to D P, not to the town, right? But you do have a task, right?
But there is, there was a requirement that you submit them to the town as well, in the future.
So the state's not submitting to you?
No.
I, I, no, I, I don't know. I'm not in the office. What I'm just saying is...
In my experience, the state's not been permitting to submit things to the town. It'd be up to you, your responsibility to make that.
And we could... Well, when, when the plan comes back, what is decided when, when we get through the decision-making process.
Was there a general consensus on topo?
I don't see a need for a topo. Well, not for a new topo.
No, not for a new topo.
Right.
Well, do you, okay. Need a new information block.
Yeah.
All right, now you could ask Mr. Plant back that question about being returned, being reported to the town.
What, what question would that be?
The quarterly reports. Reports for their, their swift, their multi-sector permit, excuse me.
No, we don't have it.
We don't have it, but we should. Do we, do we, does a town require that quarterly?
We did, back when, when it was supposed to be reported.
What are the reports?
Okay, as Ted looks at it, maybe we can...
Yeah, yeah, all right. Information block or... That's going to be, that's going to be redone. Approval block is this, and that's okay.
Current, but we need a blank.
Current, we need a blank one.
This one shows the...
It's an annual report, it's not quarterly.
Yeah, okay.
No, I don't have any annual reports. I don't know. The code officer might have it. Yeah, the location of all on-site streams, water course, wetlands, water bodies, basins, facilities, and structures, 100-year floodplains, road, driveways, parking lots. Does this plan meet that applicable?
I don't know.
By submitting it, they said they have this on here.
And that's the.
So if you want to verify this, you know.
That's the big, the big question. Really, really, I mean, it's a lot of information on file, and I'm sort of with, with Bob on the fact that, you know, do we need to have them resubmit things just for the sake of generating more paper into the files in Tad's office? Or can Tad provide us, could Tad attest that the information is there, has been submitted? The application be revised to note that it was submitted during the, whatever dated application, and we could move forward from that way?
But if, if the, if the information was already submitted back, let's say 2003 or 2006, the applicant would have that information already. It would simply be a matter of their compiling it again and resubmitting it. And I think that would be more appropriate than asking the town.
Oh, yeah, I definitely think. I mean, if we're gonna require that information to be resubmitted, they should be, have to bear that burden personally.
And since it's, if we treat it as a new application, which is what we'd like to do, then they already have the information. They would just take that information in the, in the original folder and go, okay, here's the information, and it's submitted. This indicates that it was submitted already. So I'm, you know, unless Tad says, well, no, they didn't give me this, then I believe that they did, because that's what it said.
As much as I, as much as I, you know, don't care for the, the practicality of that, I mean, I'm starting to come around to the idea that, in my opinion, that's probably what we should have them do.
Well, and let's not forget that the applicant was asked to submit back in, in 2010 and did not neglect it to. So why should we impose any extra burden on the town?
Agree, right, I mean, right, I, I mean, I, right.
Okay, that being the case, you want to go just through the waivers that were granted the first time around?
Well, no, we still have to go through these.
So, yeah, I think we.
So that they understand what the board.
Right, what they, what we.
How they're expecting. Exactly what they should submit.
Actually, they should submit everything that's on this sheet. That's, and make it current. That's what we want, we want a current.
Well, no, we just said a lot of the submissions that are, are, should be on file, and if they have it, they can submit the old ones, and that's fine. That's what we just did.
But that's, that, that still means they have to submit everything that's on this application.
They have to submit everything that's on this application.
It can be, the other information, we said the topo, for example, the old documentation, if they submit that, that is fine. So that's why we have to then very, okay, I agree with you 100%, but be absolutely sure on these.
Yeah.
The adequacy of the stream water courses on there to verify.
Well, actually, they submitted a plan, they said there's no water courses on here. They showed us there's a pond on here. What they're showing here is they're saying, we don't have floodplain here, we don't have water courses, we don't have weapons, we don't have, we have water body we've identified. We have a floodplain, no, they, we don't show a floodplain on there.
But that's why we're gonna ask for a current plan that's validated.
Exactly. Validated, we said, I don't have a floodplain, I'm supposed to validate that I don't have a floodplain?
No, submit this, if it doesn't show a floodplain, that it's validated by a current stamp, then we're fine.
They do have wetlands.
Well, whatever, you know.
Walk around the back of it, put your rubber boots on, because otherwise you're gonna get wet. All right.
Okay, so.
Let's continue.
Okay, uh, the only issue of all existing proposed, all of them private easements sound directly adjacent to the property. Is that required to be resubmitted in the?
It's a new application.
So if they, there are none, I mean, and they, they have to note that in the comments.
Or does not apply? There are, none exist. Does not apply, none exist, if that's the case.
Okay, next item, location, dimensions, layout of all existing proposed built elements including buildings, structures, parking areas, driveways, curbing, town state roads, sidewalks, fences, wall steps, piers, dogs, patios, swimming pools, and signage. Does this plan show that? You want satisfaction?
No, no, they, they need this submitted, they show it.
Part of the plan.
Ted? What you're asking them is verify whether or not this site plan is accurate or not. That's what you're asking.
I mean, and verify that the information that was submitted previously is accurate.
Correct.
And you add it is current.
Current. It could be very accurate, but not current. Okay, the location of existing site features located on the property, including without limit to existing streams, wetlands, basins, wells, tree lines, identification, location of specimen trees greater than eight inches caliper, location of existing rock, outcrop, boundary, 100-year floodplain, John, you've got a ton of that one?
No.
Well, trees will grow in 10 years.
Should be reflected on the new.
On the new plan.
On the new plan.
And trees that are also fallen dead.
Location of existing and proposed utilities, including overhead telephone poles, indoor underground tables, public water lines, gates, valves, fire hydrants, dumpsters, waste receptacles, private septic systems, well supply, wells. Should be on the plan. Okay. Uh, location layout, dimensions of all existing proposed drainage facilities accompanied by detailed drainage calculations, signed and sealed by professional engineer license in the state of Maine.
Of the old documentation, if there has been no changes, if it's current, then I accept the old one?
If it's signed and sealed.
If it's signed and sealed, that's correct. Again, I think that's, that's the whole purpose of this exercise.
Okay, yeah, so they know exactly where it's from.
Okay, identification, location of all onsite soils derived from a medium intensity soil survey. The planning board staff review committee may, their discretion require a high intensity soil survey sealed, sealed by the main licensed soil scientist. Uh, that was a waiver that we requested the first time, how do we feel about this time?
Well, the comment says that it exists, if it exists, give it to us.
No, the, it's an existing condition.
Oh, okay.
This exists here. The soil, the impervious surface is already over an existing soil, whether it be a non- or whether it be a crotan, whatever, it's not gonna give you any more information.
A copy of a medium intensity should be provided. I mean, if we're gonna go through the process of, this is a new application, then, you know, we're sort of in a hybrid mode, and we need to differentiate, I think we have very clearly.
We need to start clearing it, because some of this stuff is burdensome, gentlemen.
Copying a medium intensity soil survey is not burdensome, no offense. That's easy, if they're submitting all of this.
How is it relevant to the, your consideration of the application?
Because it's a requirement of a.
And how is it relevant to the application? Are they putting in a septic system?
They have a septic system.
Do they, are they putting in a new septic system? It's an existing condition.
So we could, so we could waive that.
Yes, okay. You can waive submission requirements.
But on the plan, you have to identify and locate.
Locate, but you don't have to ident, but why, why is the soil important? Because the soil survey is important when you're going to be doing a project, you need to know the character of the material that they're going to be working with.
So, so they should.
I agree that the information won't do us any good at this time, but there's a requirement that they have submitted.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, the materials that they're working with are very relevant here.
How, they're not making any changes to the existing site?
The materials that they're working with contain oils and lubricants, and even though most of it is ranked, there's still some of it that goes out to the soil.
But it's also an impervious surface right now. If it's not on an impervious surface, I would agree with you, but if it's on an impervious surface, it doesn't matter what's underneath.
Not all of it is on an impervious surface.
Well, you don't know that, because we're gonna find out, we're gonna find out when they verify where things are, right? Because that's the whole purpose, find out where things are.
That's why I would look for a soil survey thing. I would want to know what kind of soil is there.
Why? How's it relevant to what we're doing?
If the soil is, is.
They're fully inadequate for the building, and the building's already there.
No, not the building, the storage of, of oily materials.
Yeah, okay.
That leaks into the soil. If that soil is pervious and there's an aquifer nearby, that's relevant.
Well, we know there isn't an aquifer nearby, and there's nothing that's pervious in the town of Rwanda, except out of that Kimball farm. I hate to be that, that blunt about it, but I mean, we're dealing with, we're dealing with lime and very stony sands and notbergs here.
Yeah, so where is it, where is that stated? I mean, isn't there, isn't there a survey that exists?
There should be a medium intensity soil survey that was announced.
Okay, if it's just data collection, we want that in the form. They can take a copy out of the soil survey.
You can, it's the applicant that has to do this.
And they can, they can request a waiver. I mean, just, they've, they've requested this as a waiver. What I would suggest, if, if you're gonna do that, elaborate on, in the comment section of why that waiver is being requested.
The previous.
Yes, right, previously submitted, you know, however it.
Hard to develop.
Okay, next item, site data summary detailing the total area of all existing and proposed site improvements, amount of impervious surface, lot area, lot cover, street front, building area, wetlands area, stream areas, and compliance with the space bulk requirements of a governing zoning district.
Okay, that's the three one site.
What does that note say? See attached.
Site description.
It's part of their current application.
Okay. Next item, existing zone in which the property is located. I think we have an issue with that. That's gonna. It's all B1, gentlemen, there's nothing else here.
In oh three, it wasn't.
It's, oh, we're talking about oh thirteen. This is 2013, it's all B1.
Yes, now it is.
Yeah, and now we're talking about now.
They have a bunch of problems with it again.
Right, because they requested it be waived.
Why?
That's just a statement of fact, but it is. I mean, whatever in the comment section, I have to take out your request for waiver and put B1. It's gonna be on your other, it's gonna be on the other document.
Right, it's, it's in the, it's in the front.
Yeah, so you don't need a waiver to that F1. So none is required.
None is required.
Okay.
Site distance.
Site distance delineated for all driveway, street openings, and all these is required to maintain such site distance in perpetuity, to also be delineated, delineated on the plan.
That's quite easy to do.
Yeah. So we're gonna require it, that's not gonna be.
It's all, it's straightforward.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine that was required before.
Yeah, I didn't see it on this town. I think my, my waivers would be.
Okay, location type, size of incineration device, noise sources such as machinery.
When you say to be, there are no incineration devices out there, I have no problem with it. But they, I mean, it's simply a matter of checking, submitting and saying, doesn't exist.
But there certainly are noise sources. And it says both there.
No, it doesn't. This says incineration device noise sources. There's no commas, there's nothing, that's a, that's a device.
Such as machinery.
Yeah, but John's the English.
There's, there's a sheer veil, and there are, there's some heavy equipment there, so.
So we say, we want that as a.
I think it's already on there anyway, so it should, it should just be indicated.
Yeah, okay. Uh, location inventory of all the material storage.
And if this plan is adequate or.
Certified that's true.
Yeah. Existing and proposed fire protection, fire suppression resources, including location, size, flow rates, capacity, construction details, and specifications of systems, dry hydrants, wet hydrants, fire ponds, booster pumps, building fire department connections, external sprinkler system, systems.
They said they've submitted that, they don't have any.
Okay.
I think the fire chief should turn it on and check. Well, they have a hydrant in that enterprise.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there is a hydrant in that enterprise.
And they put that in their application.
Yes.
And who calls that? So, I mean, that's adequate. I mean, that's what it is, that's what it is.
Details shown on construction details of proposed streets, drives, roads, sidewalks, retaining walls, lings, fixtures, fences, all some of proposed site improvements. Now they want to waive it because there is no proposed site improvements.
So it's a does not, it's not a waiver, it's a does not apply. So you'd want to check, there does not apply in that one, and no changes proposed. And again, I'll caveat that, going back to if you get this certified, that this is right. If this turns up that there's some major changes, that you have to do a whole new one, then reference to, or make sure it's on the.
Okay, next item, mobile lighting plan consisting of location of all existing proposed exterior lighting fixtures, specifications for all proposed lighting fixtures, proposed mounting height of all exterior lighting fixtures, analysis and illumination, illuminance level diagrams, drawings of all relevant building elevation showing fixtures, portions of walls to be illuminated, illuminate, illuminance levels, and the aiming points for remote light fixtures. They're indicating no changes.
Yeah, I think it's, it's the same thing, does not apply, no change.
But, but the question is, is it illustrated? Because we made weers go through it all.
They were making changes.
Yeah, they were making changes, but we do need to know the location of the lighting.
Yeah, because it's not on the plan.
But as far as the whole lighting plan, I don't think that, I absolutely mean that.
But if they submitted a lighting plan previously, which they probably did, because it wasn't required at the time.
We weren't worried about the outdoor pollution of the skies.
And it doesn't show on the plan either.
Right.
It should show on the plan. Okay, site plan requirements. Landscape plan showing location layout of all the evolved ornamental plant material and ground cover to be installed on the site. Plan should, should include all of the proposed plant material and ground cover and, and including, planting scheduled, indicating plant species, varieties, contaminating pesticides in this latest of plants.
So you're going to. That needs to be submitted, and we can look at the plan if it's adequate.
Right.
So that, you gotta just be.
You're reading that page.
Submitted, submitted by applicant, you just gotta make sure it's been submitted by, by the town.
If it is the one in turn, we get a lot of slop, plow.
Okay, so we're saying that that's gonna be, they, they have submitted that.
Yeah, they've been doing separate, they've done a separate set, they've just gotta verify you should go down and go down.
Okay, building plans of all proposed structures, including interior layout, sign, the front elevations drawn to scale of not less than one quarter inch to a foot.
So you have to tell them again.
That's our plan there.
No changes. Schematic elevation of proposed signs drawn to scale of not less than three quarters of an inch to a foot. Again, there's no changes to that.
Does not apply.
Wait a minute, over the years, they have changed the sign.
Nothing, they're not changing it in this plan's application.
But the code enforcement also would be responsible for making sure that the new sign that was put up was within our code and within our ordinance. If they're not proposing a change to what is there right now, we should be fine, we should be fine.
Final ban. Detail cost estimates of all proposed site improvements, including quantity and unit cost of materials at 10% contingencies.
Does not apply.
Does not apply.
It does apply to the landscape, fortunately. Yes, it does.
So.
So you need to, you need to see that.
We need this, we need this middle info.
Okay, we need a submitting on that.
And the time, the other items.
Okay. Written submission requirements, complete conditional use review application form.
Yeah.
Condition use application fee for either made, that's been done.
Yeah.
Name, mailing address, that's on there. Evidence of applicant's right, title of interest, that's there. On-site soil investigation report by licensed site evaluator. We're requesting a waiver.
Yeah, that's for an septic system.
Yeah.
Okay, we're fine with that. Copies of final association covenants and condominium documents, right ways.
That's gonna come.
Does not apply. You agree with that, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does apply?
Provided there aren't any things like right ways, right?
Right. Groundwater drainage calculations prepared and sealed by main licensed civil engineer.
They have.
Well, they, that's something that they, they submitted in the previous application that they'll need to submit.
Didn't they submit some here from the open?
No. Narrative detailing how the proposed conditional use meets each of the eight approved criteria specified in nine seven H. Uh, they submitted that. Other studies, are there any other studies that the board is requiring? None.
So you don't need a waiver.
So it does not apply. Traffic impact study prepared and sealed by main licensed traffic engineer.
Don't go in existing business. We're not gonna do any.
And they're making any changes, so.
No change. Does not.
Does not apply. Groundwater study analysis of individual incremental impacts of proposed project upon existing groundwater quality.
Quarterly, yearly reports to the town.
Yeah, correct. They do quarterly reports to the E P.
Yeah, having some of them as well.
I think they do a annual.
Annual to the town, but town says quarterly you do to the state.
State. And they have not submitted anything to the town.
The town has nothing to do with drainage. The town's report is basically on the quantity material that's generated on the site that comes out. That's basically a little length of the year.
But groundwater study. This is actually, it does not apply. The groundwater study, it's actually when you're going in and doing the original analysis to make sure that you're not going to, uh, create and not only onsite but onsite. So that item under, under groundwater study does not.
Does not apply, okay.
Written submission requirements, market study prepared by qualified market research firm indicating the potential feasibility and projected success in proposed use.
Does not.
Does not apply.
Apply.
Uh, fiscal impact assessment analyzing projected fiscal impacts in the municipal service delivery system. Does not apply. Uh, written.
Positive.
Law requires state and federal approvals relevant state and federal laws, including but not limited to Stormwater Assemblyment National Resources Protection Act and section four oh four Clean Water Act and N D O T premise for road and driveway openings of road one to one eleven.
Why haven't we included road one eleven on that?
It's, it's a checklist, yes.
For this, that universal. It's universal. We have none required for this one, right?
No, they, I mean, they, they did submit, there are a couple of permits. I mean, the only, the only one that may have been submitted previously was that road or driveway opening for round one.
Okay, letter of compliance from the Redmond Fire Chief.
I think we need that one.
I think we need that.
Chief needs to look at it.
Okay, so we're not gonna waive that. Letter of compliance from the Redmond Public Works Director. I don't think that's necessary.
Well, based on what, what Ted was saying.
That's right.
Public Works has no control anyway.
So does that.
Does not apply.
Letter of compliance from a Redmond contract, that means, I don't think that applies. We don't have a contract.
Should we formally, should we formally waive those? Just as a, as a conscious effort by us.
That's why, that's why they put in this, in the question for a waiver.
Right. Try to leave them as what you.
No, not the letter of the.
Not the fire chief, right.
After we finish this, let's go back down and for all of the ones that do not apply, let's take a motion and let them know that they don't apply.
Okay, other information required by planning board, staff review committee.
There is none, right?
Well.
That's fair enough.
It's not applying.
Yeah, but what about the deputy?
That does not apply.
Why?
No, I thought we were gonna vote on how that waiver.
Right.
Right, well, yeah, we're all. So we don't wanna say that's not applied.
Okay.
On what waiver?
Uh, the contract.
The contract deputy and the public works director.
Well, my. Well, there are, are there, aren't there some new laws regarding waste recycling now that, that, some new state laws that went through as far as who can bring in the waste and all the paperwork that has to be done now? Or is that involve the deputy? Yeah, I'm talking about like stolen copper and all of that kinda stuff. Does that involve a deputy?
Yes.
Only if he's.
And on cattle and murders or anything else. If something is reported stolen.
How is, how, how do you guys deal with that? I know there's a bunch of state banks at the moment, but.
State regulations as far as our yard, all that we're required to do is.
Speak up, please.
The only thing that we're required to do is take a driver's license from the person that's throwing material in, waiver and registration. We think there's a couple of stuffs above me on that. For the transactions up till two thousand.
So you're not required to do any reporting or anything to the deputy or anything like that?
If the deputy shows up and.
We're, we're required to provide any information to your request, but as far as reports generated on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis to a deputy, I'm not aware of any laws.
No, but even, I'm thinking, you know, if somebody comes in with a whole load of copper that looks suspicious, you're not required to report that or anything like that.
No.
I just take that.
We could provide this state law if you guys.
No, no, I'm just asking. I don't know what the law is on.
Yeah, it's, uh, Bella Forum.
The only problem with that is that our contract deputy works forty hours a week and if he's not on duty, they can't call him up. They have him come in.
Well, they can still call the sheriff's office, but. No, I mean, so it, it doesn't sound like the deputy has really any direct interaction.
Only when there's a questionable.
Yes.
Situation. When Harvey home, when Harvey homeowner comes in with a three, three truckloads of brand new copper, I mean, uh, or six rolls of.
Okay, Bob, you had a comment about going over these?
Well, no, I'm just saying we're kinda, we're kinda getting off track.
Are we doing a wave on the deputy though? That, that was really what I was after. Is that gonna be a wave?
Yes.
I would ask, I would suggest all of those letters other than the fire chief, they suggest a waiver for.
Right.
We can then form a list on, on those.
So we're gonna leave those submissions. So we, we do want you to leave this as requested for the waiver, is what you're saying, then when we kind of review your next package. Or the general consensus with that.
So what, can you give us an, you've been taking good notes of what the, what their waiver request should be going forward?
Uh, the. The last item, other information required by the planning board or staff and review committee, although we said kind of leave it. We won't know that until we really get to the, to the final one. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't mark that. Uh, that, that's, that's the end of the process and we come to you the seven fourteen. Item thirteen, letter of compliance from contract deputy, public works director. Uh, the letter, those ones we were going to have you leave as waivers. You need number eleven, uh, the letter from the fire chief. Ten, uh, you've submitted. On the top two on that last page, page six, you change to do not apply and that'll get the.
An A.
Yeah.
An A.
Does not. Does not. Groundwater, um, does not apply.
Traffic impact.
Traffic impact study, um, you, does not apply. Cause that was for the original one.
Yeah.
So the other studies themselves are, does not apply, but the original documentation needs to. The copies of final association covenant, item six was a does not apply. Item number, that was under written submission requirements. Under site plan requirements, the schematic elevation of proposed design, side on seven, and building plans themselves. Uh, item six, um, since there are no changes to either of those, simply does not apply. All of item four, the outdoor lighting plan, does not apply as long as there's a lighting plan above.
Well, not all of item four. I think you said the first.
The location.
The location.
Existing lighting.
Is required.
The detail.
Okay, but that doesn't go on the site plan. That goes on a, on the lighting plan. If they have the detail and it's the same, and it's the same.
It could go on the site plan. If it's just a location.
Well, there's always there are things that, that will give you that. That's their decision.
Yeah, that's right. That's.
That's their decision.
Exactly.
Your detail sheet showing the construction details, proposed streets, driveways, does not apply. Move to does not apply and, and then we have general guidance for, for the rest and that should come with the. With the minutes and you're gonna be encouraged to talk with Ted as well, so that kind of moves it through. I think the general sense of all documents is as long as the survey is substantially sufficient, then you can get a letter showing where. There's significant changes to it, even myself, if they can easily put in the setbacks, for example. And you decide you wanted to put on the lights and you're getting crazy, maybe better off. And that's your choice. I would regret it.
So we need the survey validated, essentially.
Either by, either by letter or the one putting in.
Okay, what about the sidewalk, gentlemen?
Well, validated and there has to be some additions to it.
Right, right.
But for the stuff that hasn't changed. Just get it as long as it's validated.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I had one question for you minutes. On page five, item five, under written submission requirements, the onsite soil investigation report by licensed site evaluator, they've requested a road. Is that something you're waiving or no?
Um, it's something they should leave as requesting a waiver and the board's low, take that action at the appropriate time.
Sidewalk.
Mr. Chair. I agree. A S A P.
Yeah.
Maybe we can help them out a little bit more.
When you guys are no sidewalk.
Our next meeting is what, thirteenth of January? Ten of January. We're going one morning, Sunday, Monday?
No. January fourth, that would be good.
Is it, is it the night?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna be in Seattle.
It's gonna be a daytime sidewalk because at night before the meeting, it's off the dock.
It's gotta be a Saturday sidewalk, guys, or daytime sidewalk. They're gonna be there all the time, so they don't care.
You guys come to a consensus. I'm, I'm pretty free except at about eight in the morning and two forty to three thirty in the afternoon, so any day.
Any day, but one day in Tuesday. I mean, I'm not available during the week, during daylight hours at this point.
It's Saturday.
Yeah.
Saturday the fourth. You got a good time?
We did it in the morning. I think I could do that.
Just because I'm not available on Saturday.
I can, I can be there on the fourth, but I'm.
Three, can you be there, Rod?
Yeah.
It's four, Marty?
Depending on weather.
You got boots. Okay, Saturday.
No, I'm just saying depending on weather.
We're like, what's it, about ten o'clock in the morning or something?
So Saturday the fourth.
I would hope to do it.
Night?
Not at all. It's still dark at night.
Oh, come on.
Yeah, and his bedroom is dark at night.
Well, I'm up before you. Okay, I don't care what time. Saturday the fourth, nine o'clock, eight o'clock, I'm, I'm open. I'm trying to get everybody.
I don't, I mean.
They're open ten o'clock this morning. I wanted to get my coffee in.
That's your first work.
So we'll compromise at nine o'clock morning? That's a good compromise.
Yeah. I'll see if I can do that too.
Nine A M.
Nine A M.
Saturday the fourth of January.
Okay, next item of business. Do you have any questions, gentlemen?
So we need, we'll need a zoom to get in for the night, but. So how far in advance?
Two weeks.
And then so. So we come back here on the night, hopefully it's complete.
And you can join us on the sidewalk with your boots.
Well, let's see.
No, he's a lawyer, so he can come on and join us. I mean, it's not sitting inside a warm desk.
Much game of Saturday, let's talk it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to schedule a public hearing for the night as well, right? You have to do the sidewalk on the fourth. We can do the public hearing the night.
Yeah. Right, so you can actually get.
So wait a minute, so we don't put the.
Oh, wait, you have to determine.
I haven't even seen the site plan.
We've gotta determine the application's complete before we can schedule a, a public hearing.
So you can't determine the application's complete and then have a hearing on the same night?
No. Now we got, we had, we had even first discussion two weeks or four weeks ago on.
The jacket, John.
Yes, I will. Will you put that down, please?
So sidewalk.
I will make an assumption because the problem is I have to actually, I have to schedule the public hearing before you guys make your decision, to be honest with you, in order to meet my, my publication deadlines. So I'm gonna schedule it for the twenty third. Assuming you're gonna find it complete. If not.
Yeah, it is. Wednesday's the eighth and that's the day I apply.
So the second Thursday is January ninth.
The twenty third.
And then the fourth Thursday.
You'll pay on the next.
I'm sorry.
You'll pay on the next.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't right now. I'm sure we'll.
Pretty well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item two, Gary's auto salvage, condition use renewed, proposal renewed for an existing auto salvage yard in function of sixteen point five acres. Looked at it, two fifty eight River Road, pep tap, forty lot three in the outdoor district, Gary Wilson, the owner of that. Ted, you wanna lead off on this?
Okay.
He does have a current plan, right?
No, he does not. It has a plan from last time.
Is it a current application?
His plan is from last time. You probably remember. It looks pretty familiar. It's the same.
Yeah, because that was made up new at that time. It wasn't two thousand and three.
And currently is, as, his, his permit expired in twelve nine thirteen, but he has application.
So is it current? As current, yeah.
I would consider calling it current.
Yeah.
Yes. And it's under consideration as of today, so it's still current. So. Uh, the issue is that, I, for those, I think there's only one person here who hasn't been out on the site. This is small, non-conforming automobile graveyard located, um, basically off of River Road. Uh, it's behind some existing residential structures. Uh, there's a driveway that goes back to some existing facility, uh, that is the office and there's salvage yard. Location for tires, um, a number of other buildings and there are several dringed ditches and there is a road access in which there's material that's stored. stored. There's still stuff in the back, right here. You still have things in the back lot, right? That's your dad's lot, is that your dad's lot? It's your, right? Is everything on your lot, or is there anything on?
When you're asking the stuff, what's that stuff?
Uh, any of the salvage material, salvage materials in the back lot, too. As I recall, it's weight.
My property is six acres.
Right.
That's whether, so, yeah, rather than that.
And there's nothing in the back lot?
None in lot three.
Nothing, nothing. So everything's contained on lot three. I think we've been out there before, nothing, and what is, has anything changed since last time?
They moved the buses from the end over to the other.
You checked.
No, they were gonna do it when we were there.
And I'm going to back your CMP, it's been out in the last three years. I said CMP was out in the last three years. So it's quite. And no, I'm not gonna go run to look for the states.
Okay, action by the board. We need to determine if we have to visit the site.
Yep, yes. We always visit the site.
Yep, absolutely. What about the application being complete?
Based on the applicant's testimony, that nothing has changed, and we have a current plan. I move that we consider the application complete.
Before we do, go out and take a look?
If we go take a look at this application, and this application is wrong, we can deal with it at that point. We can say that this is a complete application, because we're looking at the site plan and what he's given us.
You see, and also, the science package is built in.
What's that? Yeah.
I need to try that definitely.
So you set a date, a sidewalk date, Mr. Chair? You guys wanna do the sidewalk the same day?
We have a motion to deem the application complete.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second, all in favor? None opposed? Okay, we want to do the sidewalk on the same day as the one for.
I've been out there currently, so I know what's already there. Yeah, but we.
We need it for officially.
So do that one at eleven? Do you think we'll need two hours?
No, I mean.
I may think it's a while, I may have to stop and get coffee to warm up.
He said they have coffee.
As long as he recycles it, recycle it through some motor oil.
Ten o'clock? You'll be hot in school.
I mean, unless a party, we're going at thirty. But this one. You're going at thirty, just?
No, Saturday is my day.
AM, ten AM, Saturday, the fourth.
Usually Saturday is baking day.
All right. Any questions?
Sorry, all your bags.
No. So the comments about this item?
All right, what time did we set it for?
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, but she wouldn't have had so much fun watching.
It looks pretty familiar.
You got that done, it's Gary? I got number one. You wanna get through this by nine thirty, gentlemen?
No, by nine o'clock, or I'm using nine o'clock.
Yes.
Good luck. All right, item one, zoning ordinance amendment requested, request to modify section eight point four of the land use ordinance to increase threshold lot size for mandatory cluster subdivisions from six to thirteen acres. Anton, Kobe, and Sully, Ontario are the applicants. The board has talked about this issue in the past, six acres does not provide adequate area to create meaningful open space preservation, staff recommend that ordinance be changed to permit cluster of any lot over six acres. This should be but, I believe. But to require clustering of ten to fifteen acres contingent upon the minimum lot size of the district.
So this change, this change would say that if you get less than six acres, you have to do a regular subdivision with the regular, the dollar of the streets and everything else, the way this is proposed, and that's what they're saying they want?
Well, let me, let's put the brace on, and let me give you a context here, okay?
Well, I'm just saying, what's written?
I know, those are just windows, but I wanted to, I wanna lead into the context, which is, this is not a formal request in which they've paid an application fee and are making a request of the site. There is, since we are doing our zoning ordinance changes right now, that we would consider doing this because it is, in fact, a problem, and it is a problem, I think we discussed this before. What we have is, our zeal to have clustered subdivisions, what we end up is with smaller lots, is tiny little strips of land that go around the perimeter of the subdivision. They serve no real function, they don't preserve enough open space for either walking trails or recreational lands, and they're always not contiguous with other open space, so they really don't end up doing much of anything. If anything, they just reduce down the amount of area, they might, they might reduce the amount of a pavement for the road, and that's about it. But in terms of actually trying to achieve open space preservation, which is the intent of doing cluster subdivision, they don't do it. It doesn't start occurring until you get into larger lots. And in some cases, it can be a real burden to have to do, especially with smaller lots or smaller number of lots, four lots, I mean, right now, our threshold is four lots, and our threshold is also six acres. So, you know, essentially, it gets really difficult for some folks to actually be able to meet all the standards of a force, and remember, this is a mandatory cluster. So it's basically what we're recommending, and what I would like the board to consider, is to come up with a larger threshold before mandatory clustering occurs. You can leave the option to do clustering at any time.
Is that, is that mandatory threshold now at six acres?
Four, it's at four lots.
Okay, so any subdivision in excess of six.
Four lots, or more than six acres, has got to be.
Has gotta go to cluster.
And that includes common scheme of development, that also includes the five-year plan. So, basically, if you're subdividing a small area in the back of your house, you've got a cluster. And what happens in many cases is, somebody reaches that fourth lot, and I don't wanna do it, because technically, that, that fourth lot's gotta be clustered. So it gets very.
If they trigger the subdivision.
If they trigger the subdivision. Which sometimes they often do. Yeah, a situation like that coming up right now. So, you know, the question is, what are we trying to achieve with cluster, and when should we make it mandatory? And do we still wanna make it mandatory? Those are questions we haven't gotten to, because we have not been dealing with performance standards at this point. We've only been dealing with zones. We have to launch into performance standards, and this will relate to the discussion we're gonna have later on about what happened at the complaint committee. But, you know, we have to address some of the performance things, we have to get ready for June, because we're gonna put something in front of the voters in June, and the one thing that we can't have hanging out there unresolved are performance standards. So, this is kind of our first shot at looking at some of the problem issues that we have. And this is one that I know we've talked about before. Soane's brought it up, because, you know, it's relevant to him, but it's relevant to a lot of, a lot of projects we have.
Okay, one question.
In fact, I've had about three, three projects, I should tell you this, I've had three individual subdivisions that were cluster subdivisions with very small lots, with very small amounts of open space lands, that had asked us to please let them combine, or let them extend the lines out to the perimeter of the property, so they can stop having to worry about dealing with the open space, because they're taxed separately on that. And also, it makes the lots a little bigger, it doesn't, nothing, there is no open space, no recreational facilities that are, that are affected by this, and I have to tell them, no, you can't do that, because it's mandatory.
Clustering simply allows them the option. It's an option.
No.
They can go down, it's mandatory that they go into a cluster, but they can do it at nine tenths of the lot size in the area, or five tenths of the lot size in the area, and that, that they don't take goes into a free land, so if it goes up to the property line, it doesn't matter, they can do, I mean, it's an op, it's an option to save them money.
Right.
That's what, I mean, that's what it was for, so there isn't all of that.
Well, and that's also an option, it's also, if you look at the comp plan, it's also as a means, and as a.
Preservation.
Mechanism for preserving large tracts.
And I thought we had, that should be contiguous somewhere on that line, so we could set aside one whole lot free, and then put them all together in the other, you know?
Well, and the incentive to somebody coming in and doing that is to, to me, is much, it's partly the lot size and partly the frontage. Because if you, by really reducing, by reducing the frontage, you reduce the length of road required, and then that can play into a benefit to the developer.
But, question is, what I left it with?
Well, the.
Because, no, why?
Well, the frontage would be the same thing as the width, I think, or you're thinking of depth?
No, what I'm saying is.
It's because it's seventy-five feet on the cul-de-sac. And that is certainly not an adequate width for a lot, so they're wedge lots.
Yeah.
I'm saying, because if you have a two, if you have, you know, two or three, okay, you have this minimum width, but after four or more, you have to have the fifty-foot width. That's what I'm trying to say is, so, I mean, if you're gonna increase it, where are you gonna increase it so that you turn out to have, it's already built in? Your width or your road?
Oh, that's what you're talking about, the road width.
Yes, that's right.
And that creates a problem, but honestly, I think if I were gonna look at this and recommend any change, I'd take out the word mandatory. We wanna have cluster development, if you wanna put it in there, it's advantageous to everybody, it's advantageous to the people that you're selling to, it's advantageous to you as a contractor. But Marty, for Marty's favorite Harvey homeowner, if he doesn't wanna do it, I don't see why we should be forcing him to do it.
The reason why we're forcing is because of open space preservation, reason for reduction, and one could say it was for the purposes of reduction in stormwater generation, and the reduction of carbon footprint, if you're willing to that, any of that stuff, but what it really boils down to is, it's, it's really an open space mechanism.
Kinda like that, though, if you made it as an option rather than, you know, having it pre-mandatory.
Well, that's, that's more or less what, the direction we were headed, but, and we made, well, you remember, we were required to have clusters, septic, and, excuse me, common septic, water, we got rid of those, but we didn't do anything about making cluster mandatory. And right now, it's mandatory, and it can be a real burden.
Yeah, we can look. I mean, I, I still agree with Rich, in that if they choose to do that, because of some of the benefits, they, they have some advantages towards it, but if they, if their lot doesn't support it, for whatever reason, then, you know, don't, don't make them do it.
Well, that's it, that's the problem, and I think it's something so dangerous, and I know several others have gone into where they are forced to do it, and the land does not, is not conducive to.
Right.
In his case, he's got a golf stump and a brook going right to the head, which causes a real, there is no benefit, because he can't shorten the road, there's no benefit. And there's others that are in the similar situations, and figures in the land, cluster is not really beneficial to them, or it's not really warranted by the, by the land itself.
Yeah, but he's one of the lucky ones in the, yeah.
He can build a branch.
Why are you saying lucky?
Because you're going, like, prowling through the woods and over the river, Little Ridenhood, so you mean, not many people have that chance to go over the river, nor the brook.
So.
Each, each of the back.
Yeah, so that's something you're gonna take into consideration when you go.
Well, you know, I will rewrite the ordinance based on, I mean, that's one of many, many things in the performance, and I wanna do, we had talked about this, you know, I encouraged Silane to give me that, the letter, because he had talked to me, because I wanted to just kick us into, into thinking about this, jumpstart this one, because this has been a one that has been problematic for the board and for individual property owners.
Now, one, maybe six lots, when we're talking about mandatory, you know, six acres is, I mean, very much on the small side, do we want to consider a certain size of parcel much greater than that, that we would look to make, make that a mandatory, to try and, to try and move, not, not try to, but to force them to do that, or is that just getting into the same thing, just to?
Well, it is, it is, I mean, it depends, I mean, when we get into, I mean, where this really becomes more important, is when we start, or really critical, is when we start getting into the issue of what are we gonna do with some of the, for instance, the R four district, or the R three district, large lot districts in rural areas where we're trying, the question is, are we trying to preserve rural character? Certainly, this kind of thing does that, accomplishes that much better than standard subdivision. And so, do you wanna make it mandatory, do you wanna provide a bonus density, you know, that's something we need to discuss, but it goes hand in hand with the zone. You know, the zones that we're gonna be looking at, and what, what our goals are with those zones.
I have a better plan than when we were gathered. I gave my granddaughter three acres of land, that she's gonna put one house. If that's what she wants, why can't a person, give that person the land, you know, instead of giving one acre here and keep two acres somewhere else?
Well, in a situation like that, you know, could, because it's not triggering a subdivision law.
You can just do the.
Right.
Once you can put it on three acres, you don't have to.
Well, I've got seven, six grandchildren, eventually they wanna have a piece of land, and what if they, they exempt from the subdivision, family? No.
They're not? Or more.
Five years.
Over a five year, here.
Less than five years.
Five year, bad friend they are.
I thought there was provision in the state law that allowed.
There is a provision, state law, but not in the north.
Well, that might be a bigger item to address.
Well, no, why shush it, why?
He knows where it was going with that.
Well, so is the rest of it there.
No, it's just, I, I think it's a liability for the town, it's a potential liability for the town. You know, the one, the, one of the things we was, the one thing the ordinance tried to do was make sure there was no disparity in the way family divisions were done, and the way, you know, the way the subdivision systems were done, because, you know, if you do make such a huge disparity between the requirements of both of those, what you have is you don't have equal protection of the law, so.
Clustering, not doesn't change any of that, though. Okay.
Okay, let's get on to.
So, under that item, though, in the rewrite, generally speaking, since he, since he had already had a proposal here of, in asking us, do we wanna do that ten fifteen acres? Can we just have him put down something fifteen acres, or, or something for the larger ones, and make that mandatory in the bigger?
Do we wanna keep the mandatory in there?
Mandatory. I think it should be up to whoever owns that piece of property. John owns a hundred acres, if he wants to do a, a cluster on his, on his hundred acres, he should be allowed, he should not be mandated that he has to do it.
Unless you have some other obje, some other objectives, then that is dis.
But I don't have any other objectives, I just don't think it should be mandated as to what you do with your land. It wasn't that size. I mean, if he wants, if he wants to make a subdivision, he can make a subdivision, if he wants to cluster it, he can cluster it, if he doesn't want to, he shouldn't have to. If I were John with a hundred acres, I'd break it up into twenty-five acre lots. And I'd de-restrict it, so you couldn't break it any further.
Make sure you get a hundred and fifty thousand.
No.
So we're gonna make the mandatory out of that.
Well, we, this, we still have to talk about this, when it gets put into the proposal, we're gonna talk about it, and anyway, we're not making the.
Right, right.
I know, but since he's got to write it up, I was trying to get a feel for, do we want to just make it mandatory, or put some kind of note like that in there, I guess.
Well, I, I think we, we should, we should try to do things by incentive rather than.
Right.
By mandate.
Okay.
Because if you're going to take away some rights, you ought to be compensated for it.
You're right, John.
Okay.
Well, we haven't been real big on incentive zoning, but I certainly.
Not at all.
No.
No, we haven't, yeah. We want to do incentive signs, and set standards, and so on.
Okay, so I think we do.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. Zoning map change, request to change shoreland resource protection, natural resource protection district boundaries on Lancerland Brumston Pond, and the property identified as.
Lot seventeen, lot seven.
Gloria LaGrove is the applicant.
I have a lot of stuff to pass out to you guys, if you still.
There you have it.
Answer tonight.
There you have it.
I have a lot of stuff to deal with, about two more weeks.
What's interesting about this gentleman is this is also going to be dealing with more than Mr., one of the buds and Buzz Land. It's going to involve about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight other property owners.
What's that?
Potential zone, zone change.
Do you know the property over surrounding Brumston?
Well, I'll pass to the subject, Al Trickle.
There you have it.
There you have it.
Yeah. We've got our little packet ready.
I've got another one.
Even with the pictures.
Yeah, you want, you want pictures?
I can even have them with the pictures.
Well, I don't think it shows you, I don't think it shows this one yet. Just like, put the line on the, just the map here.
That one. No, no, we didn't get that.
I know you didn't get that one.
No. Nine. 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 Eight properties, you've got four sitting around you.
Now, there's another.
Got three quarters of it. Is eight, ten people in this building?
Now, when land, this one, you don't need to get this one. When land is put in resource protection, the town, the procedure that the town has to go through, this is.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President.
There is a question on the pictures, I can explain, probably some of them.
But I got a question for you.
Black.
Are, is this area.
Why I got my name on top of them, but not that belongs to it.
Yeah, this is, this is your property here, right?
Fifty-one acres?
Yeah, fifty-one acres.
Okay, and in the documents, the other documents, there were two garden areas considered, Vernal Pool, you were waiting to make that, but looking at them.
Yeah. It's not, they're not on there.
Can you, are they over by the stream, or by these other?
By the, the Vernal Pool, they're up here, on, up here, on the inlet. That's where they be with the, yes.
Up in here?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I thought it was, I worked, I wasn't sure.
There is one down there.
So that's going to be all, so that, that's going to be covered under the standard streams and.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I guess. Explain. And you're pretty well versed in all of these rights and stuff, because I get a little confused when I.
This one, this one here. This is Brumston Pond right here, that's that, I'm looking towards, where I said LaGrove's got a lot of drugs coming in, and field.
Yep, and when I first, when I first got here, we, we had similar discussions, and I think you were here too. And Marty, I know you were. And what I remem, what I remember was that two hundred and fifty feet was that area that the state could regulate.
Yeah, shoreline.
For shoreline, they didn't have the authority to extend beyond, beyond, and we had a lot of discussion, did we want to do more? And the determination here as well, and all the citizens probably really wouldn't manage doing more than that. But when you read the main guidance, what they say, and I can't remember exactly, but they're saying that that impact is way more than two hundred and fifty feet, extending out seven hundred, eight hundred.
Yeah, they said this, that's, that's. That, that purple line, the deer wintering.
That's where the deer wintering is, that's where you see the deer wintering.
Yeah, Brumston Pond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I own Natacapea, where it says fifty-one acres there, on the, says fifty-one acres. That land was straight cut in nineteen seventy-one and seventy-two. There's no, that was virgin timber, but there's nothing, what you see growing in now is probably, something about fifteen, twenty feet tall, okay? On fifty-one acres. That was all straight cut. And my father owned land, mapped, lot fifteen, my father owned that since, I think, nineteen fifty-two and nineteen fifty-four. And it's never been deer wintering, yeah, on my land, or even down there. That's why I was swatting.
Where's Matt fifteen? In the cave.
Right here, lot fifteen, about twenty, twelve lot sixteen, probably, okay?
They have twenty-three lot fifteen.
I got it. You got it? Now, this one here, the ordinance says, that's the cross pond that towards. You don't see it over here. It's over here, it's over a public car from the Brumston Road. This state, 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 right here, state.
Is this cornfield?
No, yeah, well, no, it's a cornfield, it's just acres. Gets a dozen, all that. And then, the next one that says Brumston Pond, that's the outlet right here, on this one right here.
Where's Evers up?
Yeah. I have to track them. Because the telephone gray, probably is making more damage than goods. My last picture here, since the zitson, see the dam, was on my land.
So is that what that?
That's on the outlet of the pond.
What is it that, that, or you're proposing, or you're proposing that you do?
Well, the thing with it is, I don't know what, uh, the town says they have to have resource protection, you know, which I understand that they want to protect something, because it's not meant to protect. It just retreats, there's no deer wintering, yeah, I think, no deer.
So, so effectively, the town ordinance, in our, in our description of the resource protection district.
Yeah.
It includes. Say one, four point D, one A one deer wintering areas.
Right, and it's none, and there was.
Was the, when you, when you interacted with the state, both the game board and biologists, was there any indication that they were going to update their map?
Yeah, there is some data idea, it's the one idea.
This is what was, is, was always.
Right now, no, nothing like that.
This is.
This was probably about, about twenty years.
Right, so were they going to, to update their maps to, to change this?
This is it right now, this is what they, they have now.
Not far. This, this is, when they, when they established the deer wintering area in this, in this location.
That's right.
Was it this purple line?
That's correct.
Okay, so, and now are they looking to change it to this line?
No, no, this is the one idea.
Okay, so, so are they looking to change this deer wintering area?
That's, that's the same like this now, what you see. All this is a tremendous amount of, then the harvest thing, then the deer moves up, then they have to change.
So what is the purple line? I'm confused by this purple.
The purple, okay.
Because it's that, it's that. Yeah, what's the, what's the purple?
This is the purple, that's the deer wintering right here.
That's even bigger than the one we've got.
Well, there's not a bit here on my land. On that, on that, on that, on that, there's a new deer wintering.
In our.
And I've owned, I've owned this land, yeah, since nineteen fifty-two.
There's a, this is deer wintering, uh, here.
Deer wintering, and over here, that was all straight cut, nineteen seventy, seventy-one.
So after seventeen, the deer left.
Well, nothing there.
This is like two hundred and fifty.
If I was listening down there.
Yeah.
If, 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 let's say, if it wasn't clear cut.
That's correct.
Okay, then that possibly was a spot for deer wintering.
Before nineteen seventy.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
But after it was clear cut, it's too open.
That's right.
So they don't turn around.
Come and listen.
Okay, now, after these years of some seventy, last thirty years.
That's right.
Have they moved back in?
No, no, no.
Yeah, that, because that's what this letter from.
I didn't read that, man, I'm just saying.
Yeah, this, Scott Lindsay seems to say the same, like, he's not finding any evidence out there of deer wintering.
Yeah.
Right.
We walked all that land, we walked, I think it said on the date.
Uh, June eighteen, that night.
We walked all the, of fifty-one acres of soap, and also, in fact, the, uh, DuBois, there's no, well, there's.
But, but that leads, that makes me wonder the same thing John is wondering, what is it that you were looking for us to do?
To remove the deer wintering, uh, from our, from our fifty-four.